And it calls me to order at four thirty. That's what that process and basically, um, public comments. I don't think we have any of these here. Did you have any public comments ready?
No.
Okay, and let's go with the motion.
For the agenda.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
Please.
Thank you.
I'll move to the agenda.
Okay, second, second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, since we've got a couple of new folks, and this is your second budget cycle on this committee, or is it third?
I think it's the third.
Yeah, and I'm, and we're used to having a city treasurer in here. Who just kind of goes, oh, that's good. I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk through some background and some, some options going forward. So where we are, I want to first talk about where we are right now. So as of yesterday, this is where I'm projecting we're gonna end up for our fiscal year 2021. This number, this is our personal property replacement tax. We're on, we're on pace to collect, we only budgeted 260,000, but we're on pace to collect well over half a million. Matter of fact, we've already gotten, let me just look real quick here. We've already collected 525,000. So that puts us in a really good spot. But I think I've kind of, this only happened once before where we had a huge surplus and it was due almost entirely to revenue, not lower expenses. We had budgeted 3.89 million in revenue total, and we're on pace to get 3.22, which is a $330,000 in excess.
4.22. He said 3.22.
I'm sorry, 4.22, which is a $331,000 excess. And if you go to spending, we're doing pretty well there too, but not as well. It looks like I'm, I'm projecting about 65,000 under spending, okay? Which leaves us a surplus of $345,000. We cannot spend all of that this year. We can't, we can't exceed the 3.88 million that we plan to spend. So, but we do have about 65,000 left to spend, is my, is my projection. The reason I think it's important to say that is because we're considering a pretty large contract. I think there's some thinking that if we, if we pass this contract, we should, we should go ahead and pay the half. They're asking for half this year, right away, as soon as we sign it.
And what is half again?
It's 48,000.
Okay.
Now, they said they'd work with us if we wanted to pay some, some of that, or even delay it all to January 1. But it might be wise, since it looks like we've got 65,000, to go ahead and pass it.
I would say I would prefer to pay part of it this year.
Yeah.
I would prefer to pay as much as possible.
And, and we're not, and we're not making a final decision on that. It's not an action item, but I think that's the vibe I'm getting from everybody. And I think there's some argument for the other way, but it's probably best, especially when we look at what I'm proposing for next year. The other way is to pay it all, and if they would delay, there's actually more than one other way. They'd say, they, they said they'd work with us if we wanted to pay 30,000 this year, or zero this year, but then, you know, everything's gonna be due January 1.
Well, and that, I mean, from what I'm hearing, am I, with my schoolmates, like, they're saying, like, if you don't use all your budget, you might lose it, so.
Well, and that's, and that's what we've, so that's the other decision that we're gonna have to make. Not today, but I would, I'd like you guys to start thinking about. So here are the options that we have with the overage. We have two options. We can roll it into, we've been doing it for years. Most of it is rolled over into our operating cash fund for the next year. It cannot be a revenue line for next year that we can just spend, okay? So if we put in our operating cash to just cover our expenses until we get our first big, that's fully funded now. So if we put more money in that, we're just, we're, it's just a place where we put money and can't use it. It doesn't do us any good.
So we should move it into our, um, capital fund?
Capital fund is the other thing.
Yeah.
But the capital fund does have some restrictions on per council for our personnel.
But I guess, I mean, I know, like, we have plans, but there are some things that we need to, you know.
Absolutely, and I've got, and that, when, when the proposal, when we get to the proposal, I'll show you what I'm, what I'm thinking. I think that that excess should be rolled over into that capital fund account. But he also said we can't just let it sit there for hours.
No.
We've gotta start spending it. So we've got, you know, we wanna get all new shelving downstairs, shorter shelving. It's roughly a quarter million, but we'll have a half a million dollars in that fund once we do this. So that's roughly a quarter million dollars. We've been talking for years about putting some compact shelving. You guys ever been to the Milken, uh, the New Milken Library? They've been, I think they've got the moving shelving on tracks, so it saves space. So we've been thinking about putting some compact shelving in the local history room, because that is a, that is a collection that's just gonna get bigger. So we're, we're gonna run out of room eventually. The problem is, you know, we were talking about moving in local history. That's quite an investment to make if you're gonna move it.
Yeah.
But that's a, that's a possibility, that's roughly 40 to 50,000 dollars.
I would say this is that I would prefer to work on shelving in the general library before building in local history.
But that's.
And I also think that local history tends to be a spot where there are few people that are willing to donate things like that.
I agree, I agree.
And I think that it's easier to get a donation like that there than it is to get it here.
It's a little more complex than that, you know, because there's, there's politics involved now.
And I know we did a shit like.
I'm gonna talk to you all later on that, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but, uh, we could do both, is what I'm saying. I agree that local history is a better fundraising opportunity. Uh, but there's a, there's some complexity here that I happen to talk to you about.
I do love the idea of new shelving, only because, um, we have gotten some complaints about our shelving.
Yep.
And I also think it just, it would just be so much better for sightline or visual.
It's old, it doesn't look good, it's a security risk.
Yes.
You can't, when you can't see the room, it's a security risk. Uh, it's a place where people can hide and tear off the, the security, and they do.
And I, and I will say that if we already had new shelving, it's probably, would be shelving that if we renovate the library eventually, we could keep in the renovation.
Exactly.
It would be, you know, partly.
Oh, we, we've just gotta come up with our specs and put it out for, uh, put it out for budget.
Carpeting and lining, we, you know.
That's another question. So lining was just redone.
Oh, okay.
Lining was just redone at the city's cost. Carpeting, the contract says the city, city should take care of carpeting and wall coverings. Because it's been suggested by a lot of people. I would love to see wallpaper go away completely, be replaced by paint, and this carpet has served its purpose.
I would also like to, like, our inner evening spaces, new chairs.
Oh, furniture, that's it.
Furniture.
So, so, so one of the things that I, I, in conversation with the, the staff today, in fact, okay, I have the landlord before painted and said, can I knock the cost of the paint off the rent? That's one. Maybe we couldn't get the city to pay for it, but maybe if we did, they'd knock some of our costs off. Just a thought. Just a thought. So those are all possibilities, but the, the bottom line is what my recommendation, what you'll see during our for next year, is to roll that money into the capital fund, not into the operating fund.
So is that typically what we did last year, kind of?
No, last year we didn't do it, because I looked it up. And basically, we were supposed to, we were supposed to re, redisess it in February or March.
The cash fund is just the operating fund, or is it?
If that's, it's just, it's, so there's a, so we, we have to have so much cash on hand.
Right.
To, you know, pay those in between, you know, and that's what the cash fund does. So I, I, I'm complaining in two terms. We, I should say, operating cash.
Okay.
Yes, and that's fully funded.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't, if we put any more money in there, the only advantage is we could do a deficit budget, because we'd have the cash on hand to cover the deficit. But I think that's a bad look, and it also is a bad long-term strategy.
Well, I don't think that's a good idea, especially considering when you came in, you were running deficit budget for years and.
Well, actually, actually, we weren't. We, we, only one year did we run deficit budget.
Oh, sure.
But we weren't funding our, we were not funding our cash fund. We didn't have enough cash to get a startup. We were borrowing money to pay the bills.
Okay. I was wanting to work on that, but I know that there was a lot of hoopla and paper about it.
Yes, we still spent less every year than we took in. It's just we didn't have any reserve to pay the bills in, in the late months where we're not getting any tax revenue.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I think, I think all of this so far.
Okay, so here's what I'm proposing. That's, this is, this is what I'm. Good, and this is, it's, it's, there's a slightly simplified version of it, but I, so the yellow here is, is what I'm proposing for 2022. And I'm comparing it to what we budgeted for this year. And then what I think, I actually think we're gonna collect more. It, it looks like we're gonna collect more in property tax than we thought. We're already at 2, 2,821,000. And we typically get a couple hundred thousand in December, so. We're way ahead on PPRT, but this is, this is the number that the city thinks we're gonna, we're gonna end up at for PPRT for next year. So that helps a lot, and we'll make it so we don't have to ask for a tax increase for the six-year.
So this year, if they do, uh, are they gonna give us, like, double that? I mean, they gave us basically double this year, what we were expecting.
Well, the state did, yes, and if they do, if they do, I, you know, I, I don't know how, how Greg's team gets at that number. I had for this year, I was, I, my number that I presented to you guys last fall was 320 or something like that, and Greg said, no, 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 let's bring that down.
Yeah, which is why I was trying to.
Yeah, and I was still, I was still low, I was still way low.
Right.
But it's, they, the state, the state publishes, the Department of Revenue publishes, here's what we think each community in Illinois is gonna get PPRT for the next year, but they're in a different fiscal year. So they are predict, they're should, this is, they publish it through June 30. So then I have to kind of guess for the rest of the fiscal year, because our fiscal year ends December 31st, so it's, they don't publish that until we're well into our fiscal year. What I do is I take what they publish and I look for, because they don't say Decatur Library, they just say Decatur. And I, well, historically, we've gotten this much of the Decatur mine. But this money, this number comes from the city. So state grants and other, this is based on, on our new population. 70,552 official. I, I wanna talk about, and I know that, I think that, that you two probably understand this because you've been on this committee for a while, but for our new trustees, this other grants, it's kind of a placeholder. I, I don't really expect to get 75,000, but if I get it and I don't budget for it, then I can't spend it. I've got a matching spending line down there. I could really put any number on, I mean, we could make that 200,000 and then put a 200,000 spending line. It's just a passer, they, they kind of cancel each other out.
What grants do you get for 30,000?
So that's, that's grants. That's my, that's almost all friends.
Okay.
So, uh, this is the first year this has ever gone down since I've been here. So pilot is money that comes from this, from the city, city departments that don't pay taxes. But Greg, when he came on, said, but they, you know, they contribute to, they, they use city resources. We need to allocate from those and give the school district, you know, all the property taxpayers some of that money. So it is, well, when I first came here, it was 200 and, no, it was 189,000 dollars in my first year. It's gone up every year, and that's a lot, that's a big increase. But this is the first year it's decreased, so it's gone down to 2,000 dollars. So it's not a significant decrease, but it is a decrease. It's something to keep an eye on, because it has allowed us, its growth has allowed us to not worry about asking the city to raise the property tax. So if that stagnates for long, and then this other number stagnates, we've got a problem. These other smaller ones are just based on this year's performance. They could get a lot bigger if people feel more confident about going to public places and, you know, uh, they're renting their rooms more frequently, uh, but I figured it better to be cautious.
So I see the Meyer Fund, you know, she's.
I zeroed this out, because I would like, we, this pays, this Meyer Fund, transfer from Meyer Fund, pays one person's salary, a part-time staffer and a library assistant in local history. I've been trying for years to get her on our regular payroll, and I think we can do it this year. So that would be, uh, a, a decrease in 28,000 dollars, uh, per year. But it's just coming from a fund that we manage that is eventually gonna be depleted. So right now, we've got about 60 grand left in that fund. So, uh, we would only have two more years at most in there for her. So that is a pretty significant 6% decrease in expected revenues. Although, it's gonna be a decrease in what I think we're actually gonna end up with this year.
Yeah.
So if this is where, this 4 million is what we're on track to get, we only budgeted 3.8 million. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, um, I'm gonna expect an, an actual revenue that's slightly lower. So let's move on to expenses. Salaries actually down a little bit. This is the most expense, I, I've, I've ruled out a couple of things. I, I consider a lot of restructuring. I still haven't talked to all the players, so I'm not gonna talk about it publicly before I talk to every staff member that's involved. But I have a couple of options left, and this is the most expensive option, okay? So it's actually 2,000 dollars less expensive than, uh, what I did for this year. And we're on pace to overspend on salaries. But we go up, our overall personnel costs go up because health, our health insurance premium went up 25%. Matter of fact, this month, this month, we, we, it's a self-insurance fund. So if they start saving money, they give it to us mid-year. But on the other side, if they start overspending, we pay for it mid-year. So this month, so in October, our healthcare costs went up quite a bit. Uh, and I guess the theory, uh, somebody watched City Council meeting last night, and theory is that everybody put off all the elective procedures last year because of COVID, and they're all getting their elective procedures this year. I'm one. And that's raised the, the cost, so. Hopefully, that'll level out next year, and we won't actually end up paying that. But that's a big jump, you know, 452,000 to 5,000. This is why I had to go back to the drawing board and start to work on things all over again. And fine, because I had, you may, you may remember, I put a much larger number in front of you a few, a couple of months ago for, for salaries. Employment insurance, that's a number set by Archer. You know, that's, we don't have any say in that. So I'm, I'm just gonna talk about the larger ones. Service to office equipment, that's mostly our service agreements. To, the biggest one is that sorter, uh, the automatic sorter. And, but we also, but it's also our, our in-house printing costs, uh, that sort of thing. We budgeted it very poorly this year, um, and this is the more accurate portion. IT services, that's our portion of software and some IT support we get from the city. They set that cost to get one down, 9%, that's pretty good. So I changed this, I always said telephone, it's really telephone and internet. So all internet connections on there too.
We're getting that from the city, the internet now, right?
Well, that's not who we're buying it from. Connection was put in by them, fiber optic was put in that, but we're on the, uh, the Century Network, Illinois Century Network.
Okay.
That's, that's the actual service provider. That's really cheap. It's the, it's the hotspots. And we're looking at those, and we're also looking, we've already canceled a couple of cell phones, uh, that, that we have on our account, but we're on, we're gonna can, we're probably gonna cut down on the number of hotspots we have. If the demand goes up, we can always cancel it. Because we're, we're not paying for the equipment, just the, the data. And right now, we're overpaying, plus we've found, so what we're supposed to have done is if somebody doesn't bring it back, no big deal, we just shut off the service, okay?
But you weren't shutting off the service?
So that's, that's been taken care of, that's, that should save us a lot. I, this is the worst-case scenario. I really think they'll come out much better than 27,000. Conferences and travel, okay? This year, we budgeted 15, we only spent four. I put 20 in next year because the Public Library Association Conference, every other year, it's next year, it's in Portland, Oregon, so travel will be, travel, we've carved that. We're happy to send a trustee here too, keep that in mind. And I probably.
You go to Portland?
I, I, I probably, I probably won't attend, be able to attend this year because my daughter Shakwa is gonna be performing at the Grand Ole Opry that week. So that's where my, that's where I'm moving.
I went to, I, so, just for you guys, I went to ALA with Andazie and Nora, and we saw Michelle Obama, and we were like, sticks grows from the front.
It's a big deal.
Six hours.
It's a big deal, you're gonna typically be 20, 22,000 people.
I'm so jealous.
It's a, and great keynote speakers, I've seen Hillary Clinton, uh, Michelle Obama, uh, but it, it's just, uh, it's, it's, and it's, it's just a great experience, good for networking, uh.
You can learn all kinds of different things.
So who knows, they could change it to remote at any time, but.
And I will say that that was actually, I read the chapter on that, and we, that's one of the things that we haven't been doing as good of a job, is sending trustees to these keys.
And we have.
And so that is actually one of our statutes that we're supposed to.
Yes, and I, and it's in my job description. I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to represent the library, it's national, state, and local, but.
Send a man to.
I just, I, I, I'm not, I'm gonna go to my kids, so. And I like Portland a lot, so.
Portland's awesome.
Yeah. And ALA's in Chicago, I might attend that. I find ALA less useful. The American Library Association Conference is for public libraries, but also academic, school, special, whereas the Public Library Association Conference is about us and what we do, so. Postage, I, we're getting this down in the national, because we are, we are, we're transitioning right now to, you know what, we're not gonna be sending out a letter for everything, okay? We were saying, you know, your, your book is almost due, here's a letter, you know, I, it, it's, it's a waste of time.
I have to write emails.
Yeah, and, and even holding notices. By the time most people get their letter, they've already been in librarian checks, is my book up here yet? Yes, it is. And then they get the letter two days later, it doesn't make sense, so. General fund, let me talk about that. That is what the city allocates for all the things that they do for us that aren't IT and insurance. So they do our payroll. We put, we put in the, the data, but they, you know, Michelle and Benjo take care of that, but they have the payroll software, they have payroll corp, they issue the checks. What key do? You know, we do some on our end, but they, they do it, they write the checks, they pay the bill. We tell them what to pay, and they pay it. Human resources. So they help us with the hiring process, the civil service process, they do the testing for us. So that went down 13% this year. Let's all say thanks to Greg, thanks to him. So from 120, 125,000 to 100,000. Computer software, I gotta, somebody asked me, Amy Stockwell asked me, what's, so what is computer software? I was like, so fresh, I'm like, we're actually not know what software is. And then the more I thought about it, this is hard to define, and I think we've.
Which ones, yeah.
Exactly, I think we've really, I think we've defined it very poorly. There's a new budget officer at the city, which is why we've got all our numbers late, but I, I'm gonna, as soon as this portion of our budget year is over, I'm gonna meet with him and see if we can get a, get a handle on how they define things so that we can. But we've, we've under budgeted, and I, I think it's kind of slippery. There are some things, like, you know, that could be considered a professional service, that it could be considered a, a, a software, and I don't think we're real consistent on it. But I do know we've consistently under budgeted. I want us to start thinking about someday increasing this number. I think this is a DEI issue, okay? I think it's a way to, uh, to help us recruit minority staff. If we can say, no, we have a good job with good pay, but we'll help you go to college. Right now, it's a thousand dollars a year. I think we need to think about, could we fund that? There's a limit per person of a thousand dollars a year, 4,000 for the whole, for the whole organization. If we said, you know, if we could find a way to fund that money.
Continuing education as well, it's also.
Well, that's a different line, that's the, continuing education is on the conference, uh, but I'm, I'm, this is for, this is for actual college tuition, and per the contract, it doesn't have to be job-related. And that's the decision we have to make. Okay, if we wanna get more generous with that, do we make it job-related? I would argue no. You know, we are, we're a, we're a public institution, and if we can, if we can help people, uh, you know, move on, and we're in it, we're also, so, again, that's not for this year. I don't think we can, we can do it this year, but in the future, I would like us to think that, that is a goal. Can we make that bigger?
You want to at least make it a little.
Yeah, it, it doesn't have to be like go from, you know, 1,000 to 10,000, but, but let's see, can we incrementally bring it up?
Oh, and then, and then, I agree, school, I mean, for just one class, it's, my class is 2,600 dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Just cool.
One class, and.
No, it's just like, oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, trust me, trust me, if, uh, if, uh, if I don't get the, uh, the public service debt forgiveness, I'm gonna be working with y'all for a long time. So professional services. Budgeted 40,000 this year, we're on track to spend about 13, I'm asking for 102. And that is because to pay the rest of the other jobs, the DEI consultant.
Right there.
Yeah, and also, uh, we might be a strategic, we might consider a strategic banking consultant. There's also, you know, the, the one that I forgot to put on the budget or on the agenda last month, which is we want HR Source to help us with our, our, our performance evaluation tool. They also do, it's kind of my attention we probably needed. They do it in-person for about 1,500 bucks, they train us all on sexual harassment prevention. It's not needed because of anything internal, but when patrons sexually harass staff, that's sexual harassment, and I have an obligation to, to help with that. But it's more than that, people don't know what they should report. We do the mandatory state-required training, but we have very different ideas. There's some of us generational, sometimes some of the, the, it's, it's only reported to me, females that are, that are getting this harassment. But some of the, the older female staff just feels, shrug it off, deal with it, and the younger female staff, like, no, we're not playing that patriarchy stuff anymore. It's time to, you know, and so there's confusion as to what to report. What we're trying to do now is just say, there's no black mark about recording. Just record it, and, you know, then it's up to, I mean, if I got any doubt, I'm gonna send it to the attorney. I just banned a guy, you know, so you got, he, he has a right to appeal, he may come to you, uh, to, to appeal. But I told, you gotta, you gotta take a year vacation, because, you know, you don't really seem to want any library services. You just wanna get, you just wanna get women back in the stacks and start telling them that they're sexy librarians. You know, so it's time to go.
I don't like that, me neither.
Yeah.
I don't like that at all.
So, uh, that's, we may, I, it may be a good idea for us to get that, the training that the state provides is a, is essentially a. The training that the state provides is a, is essentially a, a slideshow. You know, we have to do it every year, but it might be worth spending twelve, fifteen hundred bucks to, to get a training from HR system. Uh, membership fees, I overshot it this year, it's going to be about fifty thousand, it's based partly on our budget. Uh, our biggest, the biggest part of it, there's a little bit of it to pay my membership to American Library Association, Public Library Association, uh, various other staff. It's mostly our membership in share in IHLs, okay? We are, it's sliding scale, we are the biggest library in, in share system, so we pay the cost. So this is, that's our database, that's our catalog, that's what it costs this year. Per capita grant, you sell a hundred four in, or is it a hundred four out? Other grant, you sell a seventy-five in, here's seventy-five out. Office supplies, having a hard time getting a handle on this one, why it went up so much this year. Probably because we didn't order anything close for three months last year. But we do, we are probably going to replace our library cards, the ones that we bought. Their barcodes wearing fairly quickly, and there's no reason to just not throw them out. I, it's time to get rid of them, they're worse, you know, but they're not cheap. Risk management, that's our part of, that's our, mostly our liability costs, and that is set by the city. That one up fifteen percent. Our rent, it, it went up, the, the contract started in May of twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, I can't remember. But so every five years in May, it goes up, so this, it was twenty sixteen, so this May it went up. So now it's going to be a full year of that rent, so that went up twenty-eight percent. Uh, we get books, materials at the same cost, that is our operating budget, the, the one I proposed. I want to show you just for comparison sake, uh, we, put it somewhere else and show. Ah, here we go. Now everything looks weird.
Make it bigger.
Yeah.
I think in the right corner, down the very bottom right where it says it's forty-some hundred percent. You need to drag that over and make it bigger. There you go.
Now I get it too big, probably. Okay, so I just wanted to put you guys in, to give you a picture, a sense of the directions we're headed. So I simplified, here's state money, local money, and other money. Twenty-twenty, we budgeted four hundred fifty thousand state money, three point four million local, and a hundred thirty-six, a hundred thirty-six other. What we actually collected was quite different from that, but twenty-twenty-one, we're budgeting the state, uh, our state tax support was much lower budgeted. Yes, but, so we've grown a lot in our state tax support in the last couple of years. But local is going the other direction, slightly down. And public libraries are primarily supported through local taxes. If you guys said, the law says that if you guys said today, we want, we want you, City Council to levy a higher tax, that they've got to do it. But if you did it today without any background work with City Council, it wouldn't happen. But that's something to think about long-term, within the next six, eight months. What about twenty-twenty-three? Do we want to, do we want to start talking to the mayor, City Council people about, about that going up? City picks it, but I also want to show you that the city has, uh, they have a right bias in some of it. So twenty-twenty, the, the fixed allocation cost went up quite a bit to twenty-twenty-one, but they went back down again this year. So, you know, we, it did go down by from twenty-twenty-one, uh, s- half a percentage more, but down is better than up. Personnel costs have, have remained relatively the same.
And that is because you've kind of, as people retire, restructured or restructured.
We've gotten leaner, we've gotten leaner. And I don't know how long that's sustainable right now, with circulation low because people aren't coming in like they used to. It's real easy to get the same amount of work done with fewer people. If we were back up to twenty-ten numbers, you know, I think libraries have an inverse relationship to, to the economy. When the economy's bad, libraries get busy, you know, so, uh, as the economy improves, it goes the other direction. So that's, that's my proposal for the, for, for the operating budget. There are, there are two other funds that we have to budget for, the capital revenue fund. I'm saying that we put three hundred, I'm saying that we should put three hundred thousand in.
I agree.
And budget to switch, what is it, five hundred fifty thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars, and then budget spending, five hundred thousand for stuff, and fifty thousand for professional services. So in other words, if we're going to do some interior design, we may need a consultant to, to, to do that, uh, you know, an engineer or somebody like that. It would have to be directly related to capital expenses. So that's, that's that fund. The third fund is our trust funds. We have a Canton fund, which has about fifty-eight thousand dollars in it. We can only use the interest. It's for books only, and we can only, guess how much interest has earned this year? Zero, nothing. So Chris says, our attorney says, he can, there's some things that we can do to get it where we can use the, the principal. But, you know, got to pay him, it goes to the courts, there's some costs associated with it. But it doesn't do us any good to have it and sit there. For now, I'm saying.
For now, I just leave it, fifteen hundred dollars is not worth paying lawyers' fees.
Fifty, fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Fifty-eight thousand, oh, okay.
So it's fifty-eight thousand that's just sitting there and we can't use. And even if they got some, the life here got a couple hundred dollars in interest, I mean, that doesn't deal a lot with it, so.
Well, and that's probably not the intention of the person who donated funds.
They, yes, exactly, and that's, and that's at this point. So I'm saying we'll get about, I didn't, interest was terrible this year, so I'm not budgeting any revenue for that. Say thirty thousand contributions, we probably won't hit that, but just in case. Expenses, I took Leanne's salary out of the Meyer fund and just left professional fees, supplies, uh, small capital books and materials. She usually, I give her twenty thousand, she usually spends about three thousand, but.
But you have to budget.
Just in case, if we don't budget, she can't spend it, and just, she needs to, so that's a deficit budget, but it's, it doesn't actually turn out that way. I mean, you, you also got to figure out, I mean, we've got sixty thousand in the fund, you know, so. That's my proposal.
I think it's, I think it's awesome, and I have the idea of transferring the three hundred thousand.
Yes.
Because last year we talked about transferring money and then we never re-talked about transferring money.
But now it's funded, so.
Yeah.
We just forgot about it.
Yeah, it's way, it's more, it's more than money.
Okay.
It's, we never went below a half million dollars in the bank this year.
So now you have to leave very soon, right?
Yeah.
So we, we can, I mean, or do we need to discuss it more, or should we take a vote for it?
I think, uh, I mean, I, I guess like the only one was like the DEI, um, how, so how much of that one or two did you estimate for Deanna, was it a half, or was it?
Forty-eight thousand, yeah, yeah. So you don't have to make that decision today, now in fact you can't, but it's, it's, it's funded, it's funded that way. The only, the, the other possibility is, and that, I had forty-eight thousand more in here, in, in that line. But that puts us in a deficit budget for the year, I couldn't find, I, I mean, I might go find a way to, I think we can do it this year. If you guys choose to do it, I think, if you guys vote to hire them, I think that we can pay half this year.
I think we should.
I think we should too, and I, so, I mean, at this point, we're just, we're, we're, our, our action is that we're going to.
I'll move to send it to the full board, okay? Meeting tomorrow, special meeting tomorrow.
Okay, we have to individually say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so moved, we will present this to the full board tomorrow.
We're probably adjourned.
Yeah, we're sorry.
No, we said a second, I'm sorry. I'm stepping, what's that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just two more things, no, we just.
Okay, so other, is there anything else?
I don't have anything else.
I think this looks good.
I appreciate you guys letting me go through line by line, I mean, it's.
Well, I can honestly, you going through a line by line is only when we're going to understand it, so. But it's our.
Yeah, I mean, Amy and Grant is going, uh, you know, I mean, tell me, email them beforehand, change it, you know, do it, and, and, you know, when I get there, it's like, oh, these, these guys have already vetted it and they like it, so, but, you know, with nobody having a, you know, particular financial background, and I just thought the best would go through it, but.
I think, I mean, this time, say by six year or whatever on the board, but like, this time, like, actually about it, like, understood a hundred percent of each line item and like how it works.
It takes, it does, it takes, it takes, it takes a while and, you know, it's, you know, I, I remember, well, you know, the good thing about having those financial books on there, I remember a time there, you know, it looked like, it was like September, and I was thinking, we're going to end the year in a fifty thousand dollar deficit, and John Phillips said, that's a rainy year, who cares? It's not a big deal, fifty, you know.
I mean, you got four thousand bucks on there, I was like, eh, I mean.
You know, one, you know, one year we, we, we budgeted a surplus of like four hundred, uh, and that's pretty squeaky.
Yeah, very.
Uh, but, you know, there's, there's also, I mean, that personnel thing is really, I gave myself some fat because there's some, there's some options, uh, that I wanted to keep open. And the thing is, there won't be the following year, one presumes there's not going to be a fifty thousand dollar, uh, professional services cost. So that money can be put back into personnel or other places that it might be. And, uh, because my fear was if I don't budget for a, a more expensive personnel solution, if I want that solution down the road, I'm not going to have the money, but I think that this, the Deanna Jones money sort of serves as a placeholder for that because it will go away, that also go away next year, so.
Okay, so.
So.
To you, sure.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right. For insurance.